Someone comes to the station, their chest hurts, can we check them out? We offer space for meetings, currently not ideal because it's on the second floor. Basically, what we were hoping in a central community station location would be to continue that fire extinguisher type of business, easy to find, easy to walk into, continue CPR classes, make tours easier, even closer to walking distance for students, continue walk-in 911 calls, offer much easier access to meeting spaces. I feel like if the public can get to a building without having to GPS it and it's just right there, it's a lot more accessible and easy. One of my favorites is trick-or-treating with the kids, I feel like we could be a huge part and just kind of have fun with the community, community events, public outreach type of stuff. Department I used to work for, Grand Shoot, on the east side of the state held a safety day every year, we had over 1,500 residents with their kids come to that event every year, I feel like we could do that kind of stuff. You guys brought up the, you know, a sense of community between teachers and students and their parents, and really, we just want that too, we want to be part of the community and see the kids and the parents and really promote safety.
I guess any questions you have, we can try to answer some now, or?
On your Third Street building site scenarios?
Page fourteen.
Yeah, page fourteen. We were under the impression that you wanted to take this building as well, it doesn't appear that that's part of the plan.
Is that an offer?
No, no. We thought you wanted-
Mary Jo, you're killing me. He had asked, and I said, "You just come out of the building, I do not see that that's something where he says it is."
And that's a huge thing, if we would do something like that, to relocate our, all of our communication, all of everything, okay. But none of those are included, include that option, right?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yes, we understand you've just put us-
Okay, you understand that we didn't want to go that direction.
So, yes, and so, yeah, the first scenario up on the top left there is just basically the, it would be the three parcels that the Third Street Elementary sat on, plus the, it's actually a street, that would be between those parcels and this building, and that's a little under, and that's a rough drawing that I made, so about an acre and a half, but if you include the playground to the east of the administrative building, gets us to almost two acres, which is the minimum we would have. We're also, I've also approached the three landowners to the north to see if they're interested, two of them have responded with interest, the other one I still have not been able to contact, so, so, yeah, I mean, you know, best case scenario, if we could acquire those four parcels to the north of the school's properties and complete the block, really, and give a little buffer between residential and the fire station, and allow more room for our-
Has there been any input from people who live there that would not be, would certainly be impacted by this, but not like their property purchased?
So, yes, and I meant to preface that, and I apologize, this came out of a committee as a recommendation to the common council, the common council has not, I mean, they're going to be seeing the minutes for the first time tomorrow night and probably not acting on that recommendation until December because it's not on the agenda for tomorrow night, because I wanted some time to reach out to you and reach out to the other property owners and be able to come back and say, "Is there interest or isn't there?", and that's all we're looking for right now, is, is there interest, I mean, can we have the conversation? And then when we get down to the, you know, brass tacks and the negotiating and stuff, then obviously it'd be a little more, but on community building-
I was just wondering if there was negative feedback from anybody who lives up here.
And I think the other point is, not the houses that you're trying to purchase, but the ones that are across the road from.
Right.
Yeah, and that way, and, yeah.
And I know there has been some feedback to task force members, from a few that would have some concerns about the noise, but again, those are some things that, just going out of what they think is what's going to happen here and not what we really want to see happen, and there are some things that we can do to address any noise concerns as far as protocols, as far as lights and sirens, when does that use it, when is it not? Because really, I mean, ambulance is running not far from here on an hourly basis with lights and sirens, and so, it's just a matter, like I said, it's things that we're prepared to address, and really, if we were going to put a municipal building in a residential neighborhood like we're proposing, that would require a conditional use permit, which would require, you know, a public hearing in front of the planning commission to give those folks that opportunity to come in and raise those concerns, and obviously, we want feedback from the neighbors because we want to be a part of the community, we don't want to just say, "This is where it's going", we want buying it.
Patty, who were next?
I just wonder how you calculated the response times at that four or five minutes, that, it just seems odd to me because we've got pretty streets coming in here all the time, and I don't know, it just seems odd that the response times seem to be best for this location rather than where there's enough of a rain and stream.
Sure, and the first three pages were kind of an excerpt from a white paper that was done by a company, international company that sells this GIS software, and basically, they're plugging in, you know, we gave them the data on where the incidents were, and then they have the potential sites, and they just plug it into the software, and the software computes it, it takes into account, you know, major highways and smaller highways and city streets and stop signs and traffic flow, and takes all that information, and that's how we get that scientific, data-driven response times, that we are not just saying, "Hey, we think it's going to take four minutes to get there", computer model shows that that's what it's going to take to get there.
That's what I was kind of wondering too, Patty, is that seems like you're not on a major highway here, whereas a lot of other sites are on a major highway, you just come right out, that's what I was wondering about also.
Yep, and actually, I think it's the last sentence and the last paragraph of that three pages, it basically says, "A lot of, a lot of fire stations are being built on side streets instead of, instead of major highways", because, yeah, in some cases, a scenario such as ours, it is more desirable to locate a station on a side street rather than on a heavily traveled street or highway, because it's all about safe, you know, access for us too, for fire, you know, fire trucks and ambulances, when they're accessing those highways, now what access do we have? And we've looked at that, and that's why we feel that we have that when we come into this thing, because really, when you're, when you're negotiating those intersections that you're concerned about, you're at low speeds already, so.
I know that in the summertime, Hatfield has a lot of the EMS calls, is that indicated anywhere on this map? I mean, that's far away up there, but do you have those calls?
Yeah, we really had to limit the map, kind of this area, EMS does 2,400 calls a year, and it covers almost the entire county, so, so we're not always going to, you know, we're not going to get there in four minutes, but those outlying areas have emergency medical responders, first responders-
Yes, yeah.
-that can go to the scene as well, so, so we're really looking at, you know-
Just the city.
-how does it affect taxpayers who are paying for this facility and the service that they're paying to, for us to provide.
Is it the case that some of this cost of this is actually going to be offset in our utility bills?
Not offset, actually, it's public fire protection, to the tune of about $295,000 was on your tax bill, so the city collected it through a tax levy, and they paid municipal utilities $295,000. What's happening is they've taken that, and now you'll be paying on the utility bill, and that's where we're using the $295,000 from that to finance this project.
So, we're going to pay two times?
No, you're only paying for, you're paying on your utility bill now instead of your taxes, now instead of, when you pay your taxes, instead of us paying utility that money, we're going to put it towards this project, thereby keeping your taxes.
Brad, I just want to clarify, because I'm hearing conversation. So, they are already paying that through their city tax bill.
Correct.
In '21, when that debt is paid off, it will no longer be on their city tax bill, it will be through utilities, they will not be getting taxed in both areas, it'll be the same dollar amount, just in a different location, is that accurate?
Until the following year, when then you can get more money because you have high debt, is that correct?
So, the utility bill is actually going to change in January 2020, coming up, and those customers that are on city utilities should have received a letter now explaining that that's going to happen in January, so.
I'm not sure how else to ask it, because I'm having lots of conversation that I'm paying for it twice, and I just want to, is that factual, or is it not?
Okay, I'm gonna, Mary, please leave the desk.
It's up to the utility to decide how they collect that fee, to maintain fire hydrants and water pressure to all the hydrants and all that type of thing, and it's different all over the, all over the state of Wisconsin, some utilities collect on their utility bills, some collect through the taxes, and our feeling was, well, it's kind of, it's really not a tax, it's a fee that you're paying to the utility for them to provide the hydrants, the maintenance of the hydrants and the water pressure it takes to get to those hydrants, that's a cost that they're putting in there, it's really not a tax, and we feel like that's a more fair way for you to understand how that fee is determined, it's not determined by, shouldn't be determined by the value of your house, it's determined by what they're charging to provide that service to the community, that helps clear it up a little bit. The other thing it does is if it's, if it's a tax, like on a property tax, there are certain places that get fire protection that don't pay taxes, and this spreads it out so that everybody who gets fire protection in the fire area helps pay that expense as well. So, yeah, if we, that utility, there's a, December 3rd is the public hearing on, at City Hall, you got that in your mail if you're on city utilities, to talk about, Public Service Commission has to approve it first, once they approve it, then it'll go through a process through, through City Council to, in order to make an approval on that as well, so there'll be all kinds of discussion regarding that, and yes, that $270,000, whatever it is, eventually, we're going to, we could either add that to, we could leave it where it is, but then we would have to add that to your taxes eventually anyway to help pay for a fire station if we decide we want to buy a fire station, but the way this is working out, it clears, clears our debt, it allows us to put it in there, you won't recognize any difference actually in your taxes, and if for some reason that it didn't get approved and it was still on your utility bill, then we would have the option of using that $270,000 to direct it towards somewhere else in the city budget if we wish to, or the council may say, "We've got this windfall, maybe we'll reduce taxes", you know, that's a decision going forward that we would have to look at, but we felt like this was the easiest way to do this, and it clarifies a questionnaire that most people never knew they were paying for their fire protection anyway. Now they at least know that that $10 or $12, I think it's going to be $12 a month, that you're going to add to your residential bill, that's strictly to maintain that hydrant out in front of your house, and you know it's got enough pressure on it, so when your house starts on fire, who's responsible for making sure that works? The other thing that we didn't talk about, and maybe it's so obvious that we wouldn't mention it, was the actual need to be out of the place that we're in right now, I think location, most people wonder why it ever got there to start with, the size of the building is not adequate, it's in the flood plain, which is interesting, we have to move vehicles out if we ever in threat of a flood, take them somewhere else in order to respond, so, it's a need we have, we're looking at 50 years from now, not next year, we're trying to provide something for our services so that, moving forward, this equipment gets bigger, more complicated, the ambulances never got smaller, if you remember when I was a kid, you got in the back of a station wagon compared to what there is now, so all this equipment gets larger, it needs better maintenance, actually, the equipment we have in our building is worth 10 times more than the building that's sitting in, which makes absolutely no sense, but that's how it worked out, so it's really a need, and we're asking the community, we, like Brad said, we've been on this over a year, we're trying to turn over every stone to make this work the best way it can for every, for everyone, but especially keep in mind what we're asking for, this isn't a stadium to go watch a football game, and this is EMS to make sure that people are taken care of, fire protection, it's important stuff, so, thank you.
What are you planning to do with the current building if you build a new center?
What's the current building?
Fire station, yeah, do you have plans for that?
Again, that would, council approval, but I guess my recommendation obviously would be to sell it, similar to, I believe the county put on an RFP on their, on their highway shop to put it out to developers and see if there's any interest in buying it and development and kind of have that competitive edge to selling it, but, again, that's another thing, is that's a, that's really a prime location for, you know, commercial development, so.
Any other, any other questions or comments?
I have a question about that, if it's a prime development area, I mean, it is protected by a dike, why couldn't it just be put there, like rebuilt there, a firehouse?
Well, it is in a flood plain-
Or added on to?
Yeah, our biggest thing is space, and so-
Can it be added on to, there's that whole end, that parking lot?
But once you get into the parking lot, now you get the aspect of bringing a 60, 70 foot truck out and turning it, and there's, there's so many space issues with-
I'm just thinking this road out here is just as tight as that, I mean, you know, I'm just thinking, and there's like kids and people and whatever on the road, I just have, I have a ton of questions, and I should come to the city council.
Or stop and see me, or?
Yeah, I was going to say, are you available?
I am, yeah, like I said, we, like I said, this task force has gone over this and over this for a year and a half, and yes, there are a lot of questions, and we get that, and that's why we're, as I said, be as thorough as we can here to say, what are the pros and cons to each site, and where do we want to be, what do we need is the big thing.
I have just one final question, so when the school does any type of construction or anything like that, we need to go to referendum for community support, what, what is the difference, like why do that, have to do that, you just can't make that decision?
So, if we were, so if we were to pay off all of our debt and lower the levy, because we don't have any debt payments, and then we have to come in and we have to build this building, and we have to take it to referendum, that's why we want to do it now, so we don't get to that place where we lower the taxes and have to put it, and go to referendum to get it back out, so.
So, I'm getting the sense that you probably want to continue the conversation and schedule this for another meeting, is this-
So, Brad and I had some conversation beforehand, and just talking about, I really felt like you guys were asking me questions that Brad and I had talked about, and I didn't feel like you, I didn't have the same expertise that Brad had to answer those questions to the, to meet your needs, and so I invited him tonight and highly encouraged him to have that conversation, we also talked about, should it be an action item or not, and we both agreed that you needed some time to soak through all the information that they shared and provide that opportunity to ask follow-up questions, I would ask the board maybe after tonight's meeting, do you want to do a separate special meeting where we invite and sit down with that committee, or if you wanted that as an item on the December board meeting, but I didn't feel like tonight was the night to push you to a decision, and Brad most certainly agreed, so, as Brad and I have discussed, the district has some facility and site needs as well, and so, we could certainly have that conversation another time.
All of this information helps, so thank you for sending that on to us, helps clarify a lot, so.
More questions as you read through it?
Okay.
Reach out, that's why we're here.
Thank you for coming today, we appreciate it, Chris.
Yes, thank you. We still don't have our Steve here yet, so, that's okay. Next, we'll have Teresa Salkstedt for Focus on Purpose. Steve will be on his own now, let me call Steve, thank you.
All right, well, we are here to share a little bit about middle school science with you all, so Teresa's going to do the bulk, but I'm here for moral support as well, so. So, there are all the teachers in our middle school that teach middle school science, and so as you can see, we do- so as you can see, we do have concentrations in the different science areas. Instead of when, last month when we heard about elementary, it was a smattering of all the sciences across every grade level. It is more concentrated, sixth grade earth science focus, seventh grade life science focus and eighth grade physical science focus. So, much like last month, we'll go through just some big ideas, work of the department, some wonderful highlights for you of the work happening at the middle school and then some next steps. So, again, this is kind of that DPI goal for instruction, their focus of science. You guys looked at this last month, but just to kind of remind you. And then again, just reminding the way that the science standards are organized, those science and engineering practices that cross all of the different disciplines and the core areas within each discipline and again, those separate earth science, life science, physical science discipline areas and then the cross-cutting concepts that there are eight of those. Skip that one. Sorry, just talked about that one. Those are those, I'll go to the next one, Del. Those are those cross-cutting concepts once again, so those are a goal across the different disciplines, every grade level works hard with those. All right, let's pass on to Teresa.
Okay, these are just some pictures from some of the science work going on so far this year in seventh, eighth and sixth grade science, learning how to use microscopes identifying the parts, learning how to move water using mechanical energy and water energy and then sort of the favorite earth science, 3D earth model, which this lovely lady made a cake for hers, which is always appreciated by everybody and us. So, that's some of the work we've been doing so far this fall. And 2017, 18, we really worked on writing out our guarantees for each unit of learning. We use the NGSS science standards to do that. And then last year, we used those guarantees and matched them with the ACT college and career readiness standards that we created the year before. And then this year, we're really focusing on writing those kid-friendly and very specific learning targets for each unit, so the kids know exactly what they should be taking away each day from class. Those are some of the resources that we've been using. Pearson Success Net is used in six, seven and eight. It provides an online textbook for teachers and students if they want to access their book online. It also provides all of the resources for teachers as far as short video clips, handouts, those kinds of things. Then, of course, we always are searching for more interesting and engaging ways to get kids interested in science and if you have a middle school kid, you all know, they know all the words to the introduction for Bill and I and sing along every time. But, and then lab experiments, those a lot of times, the book provides some, but I think you can find a lot more interesting ones if you look around a little bit. So, lab experiments, kids really get excited about that and if you can incorporate food or edibles at any point, it makes it a lot more fun for kids. So, sixth grade with earth science, we make, we do the whole rock cycle using butterscotch chips, white chips and chocolate chips and melt them and then at the end they get to eat it, so keeps them a lot more interested anyway. And then, these are some of the bigger projects that go along in sixth, seventh and eighth grade and you can see that we do a lot of work with how the cycles in the earth as far as rock, how it's the same rock that's always been here, how does it change? And they do a lot of work with DNA and microscope labs in seventh grade, which I thought was pretty impressive, being that that seems like it would be really hard for a seventh grader to understand, but it's not. And one of the biggest things that the eighth grade does is the scientific method project and that is usually in February, the kids complete their projects and then kids that did an outstanding job designing their experiment and providing their data and were able to understand it, they get to go to the math and science expo in La Crosse and present and get judged by university staff on their work there. So, that's kind of a highlight for eighth grade students. And our continuing work is to keep up with our learning targets. They're always changing, always are tweaking them and making them a little bit better. And a problem that we have again this year now is that our seventh and eighth grade teachers with common assessments, they are single people, they, we only have one seventh grade science teacher and one eighth grade science teacher, so looking for people that they can reach out to. However, Jolene has a varied science background, the new seventh grade teacher, so she and Sarah do talk about different things because she has taught physical science in the past as well, so that's nice that they can have those conversations. And then, one of the things that we're looking into trying to improve is instead of a paper pencil test, to create more tests where they have to perform a task and show that they know how to do something and inquiry-based instructions so that they're interested in problem solving. And kids are, if they're, if you can get them interested in a problem, they will go to a lot of links to find solutions and think out of the box and so we want to encourage more of that in science, middle school as well. Any questions?
We recently received an email about the STEM robotics competition. Tell me how all the other classes get involved in that, because that certainly is a piece of this. Is that, am I correct or no?
That is, that's like in our Tiger time, I do a STEM Tiger time enrichment and then seventh and eighth grade, if they sign up to do that program, they do that with Mr. Stumper through Tuckett. So, that's a program that's run through Skills USA.
Okay.
So, it's kind of a closed program.
I was recently asked by my 40-year-old daughter, do they still have to do the insect collections? And I guess you answered that.
No.
Yes. I said, you know, I don't know, but thank you.
How, what does the schedule look like for sixth, seventh, eighth grade with science classes? Do they have a daily, do they have a semester?
Yes, they have, they have a single class period every day. ELA and math are two class period or a block, but science and social studies are every day for one class period.
For sixth, seventh?
Yeah. For the whole year.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you.
We have a couple of employment recommendations here for Action.
The one that we do at our school is our new, our new high school, middle school shared counselor and we were so excited to, thank you, so excited to have quality applicants at this time of the school year. So, the other two are both retired, they don't need Action, but wanted you to know those as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the hire?
I vote to approve new school counselor. A second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Before we jump off of our people, I just wanted to point out, and perhaps you saw it in your packet, that Jen Doll, our elementary school art teacher, ironically Tiffany Belts, the other co-chair to that committee, is one of Jen's former student teachers and so she really just does, and I know we talked about it a little bit last time, about the ornaments for Washington DC, but she does so much to grow the profession and the more you hear about teacher shortages, it is amazing how much time she spends in growing the profession. And ironically, she's on a state board and like three of the people on the board are, it's almost like that whole seven stages removed from somebody. You go talk to an art teacher, they have a connection to Jen Doll in some way, shape or form, but many of her former student teachers get involved at the higher level and I'm just really digging deep, so we're super, super proud of her work on the art and design standards with the state as well, so wanted to bring that out.
You know, we hear so much about Jen, but this Amy Olson too, I see their students' artworks displayed down at the library right now and that outstanding stuff at every level.
And I will also share that Ms. McKeeth at the high school, I see more student artwork displayed at the high school than we used to years before as well and that's really fantastic. It seems like such a simple thing to go and put things on the walls, but it just simply didn't happen for the longest time and I don't care if they're trying to act cool, there's a sense of pride when you walk by and see one of your things displayed, I just think that's really, really nice.
I just think the entire department must, is just very excellent.
Good stuff, absolutely.
Very good, okay. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yep.
Next, we go on to field trips and we have a JAG field trip to approve.
Did we find out if it's more than one student?
Mr. Chambers?
It's one student from Black River Falls and it's a couple of students from Sun Prairie and the teacher from Sun Prairie will be accompanying the students to DC.
And so Lori Carlson will not be attending?
Lori Carlson will not be attending from here. In fact, the second chaperone was a Toma teacher, the Toma teacher is no longer able to attend. There were two, I believe two Toma students, two Sun Prairie students and our student and it was going to be the two teachers from Sun Prairie and Toma. Now it's just the two Sun Prairie students, the one Black River Falls students and the one Sun Prairie teacher. And there is the National JAG leadership.
And so, just to be clear, part of our relationship with JAG was that our teacher would be freed up to go to these types of things and students would have access to them and so it is a small number right now, but Student Leadership Academy is just really, really, really good stuff at the national levels.
I did attend the JAG presentation that was, we were invited to and it's small, but very individualized, very, very important things that are going on. So, a motion to approve?
I'll approve.
Teresa? Okay, Scott's second. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Strategic plan.
I just wanted to share with you a brief update. So, I sent out an all call to staff members and to families inviting them that wanted to come to the table to talk about the updating of our strategic plan. It was a small but mighty group. We had some parent volunteers, probably the middle school was the most heavily represented building that was there and they really were some great, well-intentioned parents that have had diverse experiences and all were here to make the district better, which is fantastic. They came with some feedback for things that they would like to see improved. We shared our scorecard up until this point, we shared the, all of the feedback from that community survey and the, you know, which words do they still speak to, that whole pride in our community, all of that stuff. And so, we were not able to wrap it up in one meeting, so we will be definitely calling a second meeting. The focus of that group is to help set that big picture vision mission and then we'll bring it back to the teacher leader groups to work out the individual goals within, but it was nice to have active participants that were interested in having the conversation, so.
Did you feel you had a good representation of a good group?
So, they all had elementary experience because their kids had been through elementary. There were several at the middle school and then one parent had students at the high school and I shared it in my email about American Educational Week, but I would share it with you guys again. One of my favorite comments of that whole week was the parent, when we shared our student scorecard and they looked at the student success pillar and they saw the yellow and the red there and I said, what, notice things I'm wondering, so you have about what you're looking at? And the one parent who used to open and enroll her students out of the district and has recently brought her kids back to the district, she said, I'm shocked. And I said, tell me more. And she said, my kids have had nothing but all green experiences here and I just, I'm shocked that that's not everybody's experience here. And so, that was just a really interesting perspective and then, which led to conversation amongst that group and the our people committee when I shared that same feedback, that our district does a fantastic job with students and families that want to dig in and take advantage of the many, many, many opportunities that we have before them. That is not our achievement challenges. Our achievement challenges are on the students that are not as interested in taking advantage of those opportunities. So, we feel that way and we talk a lot about our programs for those students that want to take advantage of the diverse opportunities. It was really nice to hear it from a parent's voice, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
Thank you. Western Technical College program updates.
Stephanie is back.
Speaking of opportunities for parents, right?
Right.
So, I won't talk a long time because there was lots of things in your packet, but just wanted to share a couple of exciting opportunities for students for next school year, the 2021 school year, in some high needs employment areas in our community. So, the first one, we will be partnering with Western Technical College to be able to offer the EMT basic course and that's a five-credit course through Western Technical College for students. They would receive high school credit at the same time as college credit. And so, Jody Stoker and I have been talking to Western for a couple of years about how wonderful would it be if we could offer EMT classes here in Black River Falls? And so, because we are one of the many school districts in the Western Technical College area, they rotate around where EMT is offered, sometimes Florida, sometimes Toma, sometimes here, but on like a seven or eight-year rotation cycle. And so, because they have great needs for employees in that area and we have a lot of students, that's the number one healthcare in, as an industry is the number one area that students are interested in going into and so we have continued to see what kind of opportunities we can provide for them while they're in high school to get their feet in the door in that industry and whether they stay working as an EMT or if it's a wonderful way to put themselves through school, if they are going to go on to be a doctor or nurse, it's still a much better paying wage as well as getting that continued hands-on experience in that field as well. So, because we had bothered them for a while, they actually wrote a grant to fund an instructor. So, for two years for sure, we will have EMT offered right here in Black River Falls and so we would like to have as many Black River Falls students as we can and then also open it up to our neighbors. So, we tried to pick a time with our block schedule and working with other high schools. I mean, you can see there that it will be run in the fall, just because any people that we were trying to take away as many barriers as possible, so any students that would like to participate that are also athletes. Spring sports travel a lot earlier in the day and so we put it towards the end of the day, so hopefully neighboring district students could also participate. So, daily all fall semester plus some Saturdays to get in all the hours, because it's a hefty class, lots and lots of hours to meet that five-credit requirement. So, our hope would be that upperclassmen would be able to engage in that class and get some great experiences and get high school credit as well and then hopefully, because it is a five-credit class, the first two credits, halfway through the first semester, they would get their license to be able to be a first responder and so they would walk away with that certification and could be a benefit to our community or the smaller communities they might live in and then at the end they would be EMT certified and would be able to do that as well. So, Jody has been actively working with the hospital to, they'll have to do clinic hours as well and so we'd like that to be able to happen in our ER here at the hospital if at all possible, so we're still working on those partnerships.
So, will this, these credits replace, are they just elective credits or?
Elective credits. And then the other partnership also with Western Technical College is to start an auto academy with Gross Motors and so our program will be kind of modeled after, in the Sleepy Hollow dealership has been doing this for a couple of years and so we are excited to start a similar partnership here. So, students would take two classes over two years, so basic maintenance would be offered next school year and then auto tech would be offered the following school year and they would be offered on Wednesday nights at Gross Motors. And so, one or two employees from Gross, Gross Motors will be the instructors, so they do have to get some credentials and things through Western, but they're very much on board, because again, they're looking for techs and they love the idea of being able to train them themselves and give them lots of hands-on experience and also be able to kind of tread about as employees and that could possibly lead to future employment for them, which would be good for our students and good for them, so.
Kids have to have a certain grade average to take these?
That's not necessarily any criteria. It is an application process for both and so we would love to have to turn lots of kids away, but because they're evening, or you know, different schedule for the first one, evenings for this, I, we're not sure exactly what we'll get, but same thing, we'd like to give Black River Falls, get as many Black River Falls students as possible, but we will open up to our neighbors as well, so.
Some great hands-on stuff.
Yeah, very good. So, for us, we already have, just in our region, there's 26 districts that have transcripted credit. We have 11 transcripted classes that we offer. That's the most in our area except for Toma and Coleman and so that's pretty exciting, but then being able to offer these, that's not figured in math, because that's current reality, so being able to offer these current partnerships or additional partnerships would be great for kids too.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah.
Good job. Student success committee report.
So, we met November 8th and we reviewed the overall professional development plan. We went over the school report card and data review. We went over the school report card and data review, which was not very bright and cheerful.
No.
And we talked about some of the things that we think might be contributing to that. And then we also have the curriculum objectives report.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Amy. You've got the monthly expenditures in your packet? Any questions that you want or anything you want brought out for discussion? If none, a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the monthly expenditures.
Thank you. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carried. Long-term capital maintenance.
So since last time we talked about this, we have hosted two different facility meetings within the buildings. We went right to the Forest Street Building's staff meeting because that building is pretty significantly impacted due to the movement of the 4K and early childhood programs. And then we hosted one at the high school for anyone else in the district that wanted to come. And everyone was heartily in agreement with the items that were on the list. There certainly are an awful lot of, with the maintenance items on the, on the list, there are some concerns about 4K and early childhood moving over to get hired by some staff. And there are some staff who are really excited about the possibilities that could exist there. So the question that was asked of me is, is that an automatic, absolutely not going to add on to Forest Street? Or is that a task that the facility community group will make a recommendation on? And I just said that the board had had conversation that it did make sense to add on to one building when we had classroom spaces in another. But I also said that our conversations up to this point has been that they wanted to use the similar processes last time so that the community drives that work. And so a very non-committal answer in that we're waiting for that task force to really make that recommendation. So that was shared. There were a couple of other items that were added on to the list through our discussions. And Jill, perhaps you can help me remember, there was some conversation about some updating in the Linda Theater. There was conversation about the, the first grade bathrooms at Forest Street, did those get added?
Task cards.
Uh, the task cards. That may have been it.
Business and labs.
Right. And family consumer, I thought those were the two, thank you, that we had talked about before we got there. Family consumer and the business labs. If you walk into the business labs, it very much is old school with those big counters for the, all the plug-in typewriters. And when you walk into almost every office space, there's flexible groupings and all of that stuff. And so it's not just a matter of new furniture because there's the huge plug-in like mounds coming up off the floor. And it's definitely very old school in there and not nearly as versatile as their laptops allow them to be. They're still in old rows. So those two items were added to the discussion. And the words that we said to all of the staff members was that the board has seen this initial list and is hopefully going to take some action in November that would start moving this conversation forward.
Okay, we started the discussion at our special meeting. So now we're to the point of needing a motion to authorize a committee to begin working on the plan to educate the community. The motion to move forward with the committee plan.
One second.
All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carried. And then next gets to authorize Myron and Bray to engage in, and engage to facilitate the discussions with that committee.
You make a motion for that?
Yes, we do.
I support.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or discussion on the whole process?
What does that cost to be mentioned in this initial?
So Myron does not charge a fee until we are successful, if it ends in a referendum. And if we are successful, that's when they calculate their fee.
According to the time that they've spent.
So what if we don't go to a referendum for some reason? How do we determine paying for their time?
It doesn't, they have donated that to our community, I believe. Bray, depending on how many studies we need, that is how their initial fee works. Because they need to dig into the electrical and the HVAC and all of that work. And that does not happen without a charge. So we can somewhat control that cost a little bit based off of how many additional studies we need because the work that we have done is so recent. And those were the two organizations we worked with. They already have an awful lot of the diagrams and formatting of our buildings, so.
Can I get a little clarification on both that second motion and second?
Motion to engage Myron and Bray architects to facilitate the community committee meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Okay, motion carried. Move on to our district and tribal collaboration.
And so there are no recommended changes, but as a compliance measure with the Impact Age application that goes out each year, we have to note that the policy was reviewed and that there were no changes recommended. And so that's.
This is something we do every year. Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, so motion to approve.
I vote to approve policy A1, quite one.
Thank you. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Okay, motion carried. Moving on to soccer funding.
So as the board has talked about a couple of times, there are several current parsonage sports that are funded by community groups as opposed to by district funds. Just to give you the rundown, swimming, hockey is jointly funded. There's some district dollars, some additional family contributions. Swimming, soccer, hockey, and the shooting takers, we don't currently pay anything for. Soccer is at a point in this year that they need to know whether they're building a schedule for next year or not. I asked Mr. Wyman how many kids they had involved. And this past year, he said there was a team of about 23 students that finished the season and 16 of them were Black River Falls students. And so in my opinion, that makes it that, initially when we first had conversations about a summer team, we were concerned whether we would even have enough to be able to field the team. We have certainly gotten to that point. And so soccer has done some fundraising. There's a few people in the community that no longer have kids in school who have been very generous with donations. But Jay Wyman is at the point, why does that coach have to go out and raise funds for his activity when we've, you know, it's heavily being used and being successful? So I am recommending that the district start to fund soccer. And the cost was about $8,000. The other sports, the admin team is going to have additional conversation on as to what we should do. And so I'm asking for the board to approve that we would pay for it. But I also want to talk about the co-op schools and what the per-student amount that they will pay to supplement that.
So right now they pay nothing as well, okay.
The, the co-op schools don't pay anything because the district hasn't paid anything. So those donors have covered the entire cost of it.
So might pay $8,000 more down or that would just be additional money?
Might it go down?
It could be less. It could offset.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, I wasn't understanding. Yep, no. So if, if we came up with like a per-student cost, and that's very much what Jill does for hockey with the co-ops that we have, we come up with a total program, number of participants, per-student cost, and then those that are co-op-ing in pay their per-student cost. And then Black River Falls pays the per-student cost for all of ours.
Usually the districts that they're coming from pay their co-op?
That is an individual decision and it varies depending on the school district. We are very aware of some that the families pay nothing and we are very aware of some that the families pay all, so.
The payments come from the districts. The agreements made with the districts, the districts send some money, but what they do with their parents.
We don't have to worry about collecting the funds yet.
So for the eight students we're talking about that are presently co-op, there is a possibility that their district may not fund that and then would the parents?
They have that option, but they have that option. I certainly don't think we should pay for.
No, no, I don't either. I don't either. I just wonder if that, if numbers would change.
Well, to be honest, the additional funds, you know how it works, that based on our per-student, all of that stuff. So we are not that tight this year that the $8,000 would be impossible to find. So I'm certain that coming for next year, we will, we will put a placeholder for that.
Is it co-ed?
I don't know.
Yes. So we don't have to worry about that.
Correct, it's co-ed. They compete against a lot of teams that are all boys because girls' soccer in the high school level is actually in the spring. And we don't have enough students to do both for boys and for girls. So we do a co-ed team and they have to play against boys then.
And then it's a real idea.
Yep.
Any questions or comments? All in favor of the soccer funding of $8,000?
We actually have a motion.
We don't have any motions yet.
We'll go down a motion.
What happens? I'm sorry. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to fund the soccer program? Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Sorry about that, you guys. Okay, now we're to our second reading of our policy committee. We, all of those readings we went through last time. No proposed changes since then and they're all cleaned up. Are there any that you'd like to pull out for discussion or changes? Okay, I'm going to ask that we make one motion to approve all of the policies by consent agenda then. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Approve all those. Meeting minutes were in your packet as well. Any of those you have questions on or want to pull out? Okay, is there a motion to approve? Thank you.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carried. Dr. Severson's report.
First of all, I just wanted to remind everyone that this is American Education Week. So hopefully you are able to step in and get a close bird's eye view of some education happening this week. How about that? I wanted to talk to you a little bit about, Jill, if you could pull up those aerial photos. We discussed very briefly the Spring Creek School a couple of weeks ago, months ago, pardon me. And I had a follow-up conversation with Dr. Al Leymeyer. And he really is hoping that their community fundraising efforts are going to kick off starting in January. And so worked with Laura and Brandon at Red Creek to talk about where that could possibly go and what that might possibly mean. The Fayette Department at Red Creek is very interested in using some of the wooded area that you. See, which am I going to the other one first? I'm sorry, it's a little bit. I think it's connected there. Yep, there it is. Perfect. So just to orient you for a moment, obviously Red Creek School, this field right here currently belongs to us. We, I'm going to say a moment, but that's not the word I'm thinking of.
Rent?
Rent, thank you. Sorry, I'm struggling. We rent it out to a farmer right now. We have talked to the DNR about the wetland delineation and which parts of that area are wetlands. We currently, so here's our softball field. We had a nice field trip, Brandon and Laura and the Fayette teachers and myself. And a couple hours from our creek, went for a hike. And if you stay on our side of the creek, there's really not much wooded area. It gets very narrow along the ballfield area and then you're right at that top of the creek. But when you go down to the bottom and come up this side, there's quite a bit of area along this side. So we were gifted this property that goes down to the bottom of the ravine from the Hoffman family. This is the hospital property here. They were gifted property from the Hoffman family as well. And so we are quite certain this loop that you see is on partial hospital property, but we're not sure exactly where that line is. We went hiking and we saw some sticks in the ground. Was that like somebody's walking stick or was that a property line? We were unsure of. And so we need to do some surveying to find out exactly where our property lies. What they're interested in doing is, first of all, we thought that this site would make a nice spot for that Spring Creek School. We don't want to infringe on any of the area that's cleared off around Red Creek, but this would be very visible from the road, which is very important to the group that is organizing then, is that its visibility. They want an area that would be mowed. They talked about building a non-functional but look-alike outhouse building so that it can look true to period. And he was very clear, we're not functioning, so that was good. But they wanted to bring a water pump, all that stuff to really make it look more like a museum. So when, this is like where that garden is right now. There is a ditch or a gully or whatever, but you can walk through there. We were talking about the possibility of creating a walking trail. So that red is the fantasy island of the Red Creek Crew where a walking trail could go through the woods and so forth so that Fayette classes or teachers, whatever, could take their kids outside and go for a walk through the woods there. So I called the CEO of the hospital, Mary Beth White Jacobs, and she's like, ah, we're going to have to talk about liability, we're going to have to talk about all that, absolutely. But first, can we even talk about looking at the land? So at the same time that they are going to be talking to the community about fundraising for Spring Creek School and relocating it to that site, Red Creek is looking for some permission to also start talking to some of our other community partners. Like if you're going to come to move that building there and you have earth-moving machines, would you be willing to like move a path that we could possibly make through the woods? And just wanting the, it to be kind of one community conversation as opposed to the school is here and now this and this and this. Because of the wetlands area, we're unsure if there is a bridge needed to be able to get over that, the creek part. It would be a really large bridge to get over the creek. And then we thought Jill's liability hat would like crush her head if we had a bridge going over the creek and kids out there walking on it and so forth, if it was over the widest part. But a creek over that gully and stuff where it's more wooded and stuff would certainly, certainly not be. So.
Well, we, we know a bridge builder here.
That was exactly Red Creek's point, exactly Red Creek's point.
That would be a good opportunity to showcase something special.
And so knowing that, Dr. Leymeyer, he said that there are rough estimates. He's talked to some building moving companies, they think it's going to be about $100,000 to move it. He's talked with some of his, he's made friends in the community about how we can get it there through the ditches. And he said, well, you know, and he got friends who are connected, he mentioned David Hoffman. And so then that sparked the whole, hmm, there's going to be earth movers there. What else can those earth movers do? And all of that conversation. So I didn't want it to get too far out before you were aware of connecting those conversations and not asking for action because we're not asking for anything yet, but wanted you to know. I did contact the hospital. She said, why don't you just start with a survey and see how much is on their property, how much is on our property? When we walked through it, there's spots that have a ton of, I don't know, call them pickers for lack of a better word. But then there were some areas that were nice and clear and didn't have a bunch of that. And there's some areas that you could easily clear like an opening, you know, for gathering. And so it was a fun hike and they are excited about some possibilities. So just wanted to update you on that.
Sounds good.
I'm glad you showed us where that, I was thinking that you were going to put that school back in the woods and I was worried about horrible things happening.
Were you too?
Well, I, where were people?
Too. The visibility was very important.
I didn't know we all think.
And the wetlands are really wrapped all around there. So when I asked the DNR for mapping, their, their mapping didn't even have Red Creek School on it. So they clearly have some updates that they need to do to their, their mapping site, so. The other thing that I wanted to talk with you about was some of the behavior conversations that we are instigating. So you likely saw in your email that I invited anybody that was interested in coming district-wide, which would include results as well, to some behavior brainstorming. It has been just an unbelievable year for the amount of, I'm going to say fairly significant behavior concerns. And every year we have our challenges, for sure. Pardon me. Oh, hi, Steve. Could pause right now if you would like to.
Yes, we will pause and go back to our item of business where we have board combination.
You're up already.
Yes, you're right on time.
And, Angel, we're not sure what call you're on and we know that you can't tell us because she said it was a life-saving mission, so we're glad you're back. So we do want to recognize Steve Collins. And while he did get recognized along with the whole EMT, just very, very specifically, Steve has really done an incredible amount of training for our staff and for our students. And it is definitely a community service that he provides to a large, large, large number of our community members. Steve does a lot of his trainings up here in this building. And to be honest, I like that so many community members are coming into this building and are utilizing it for different trainings because I feel like the school should serve that purpose whenever possible for different community groups. And so there are many times that Joy's downstairs and someone will walk in and she'll just be like, EMT training, you must be upstairs. And so we just have a lot of people that are utilizing the space for that. Plus, on top of that, Steve has done all of our coaches, that's a new requirement, that all of our head coaches have to be CPR and first aid trained. And we decided that it wasn't just our head coaches, we wanted all of our coaches. There's no way that we have the capacity to do all that training, so Steve steps in and does a fantastic job. Most recently, he's working with Don LaFleur up at the high school in one of our Fayette classes where they are trying to certify all, a whole class of. Steve's like, usually it's like six or eight people, it's like 27?
I think it was 18.
Oh, eighteen kids out there trying to get certified all at the same time. And so in his retirement, but clearly not while he's in uniform, he just really has taken on a very strong community service attitude about this training. And we all know that the more people who are trained, the safer everybody is. And so we really appreciate his dedication to education in our community. Thank you so much. You bet, Steve, you bet.
Thanks.
This is you. Now I got to get a picture, don't we? Yes, you can clap for him. Now the loud applause, right? I almost got Jill in the background. That would be creepy, right? Thanks very much.
We will continue on with.
You certainly don't need to stay anymore, Steve. We've cut a long day. So we wanted to talk with you a little bit about behaviors. And I'm sorry, I want to show you some data here quick. So in many conversations that have been had around the district, we have talked about the increased insignificant behaviors. And so what I'm going to show you, this is the eddychlimber tool that all the staff use to enter in negative behaviors, we'll say. So what I want to share with you first is some historical data. This is as a district last year. And so just to show you exactly what we're looking at, what this is showing us is this is the number of majors and this would be the seventeen eighteen school year. So this was last year. This is, no, I'm sorry, two years ago. This is last school year. You can see as a district, there's three thousand seven hundred and four majors. What I wanted to talk with you a little bit about is when we start talking about defiant behaviors and when you're talking to teachers who are frustrated on a daily basis with trying to accomplish things, I also didn't want to paint the picture that it's all kids all the time. And so what this chart right here is showing us, and I want to make larger to show you, this is last school year, the eighteen nineteen school year, seventeen eighteen, and it goes backwards. The red on the bottom are the number of kids that have six or more majors. The yellow is two to five and then the green is zero to one. And the reason I want to frame the conversation around this is we are not talking about all kids. We are talking about a small number of kids whose behaviors continue to get more and more egregious. The red is increasing certainly and we, so you can see this, it says a hundred and eighty-seven students that have six or more majors during the last school year. What is disappointing to all of the administrators in the audience is that we are on trajectory right now to knock these numbers out of the park for next year and nobody wants that. Nobody wants these numbers to be even larger. And so we want to have a community-wide conversation about what is an acceptable level of civility in our schools and what is not. Can we come up with some very strong, when this happens, this is going to be the consequence? It can't be as drilled down as a kid does this, this happens. It can't be that concrete. But what would be very powerful is the family of the student that is misbehaving for us to say, we had a community conversation and everyone agreed that their kids deserve to go to school in an environment where that is not allowed. Something that it feels less like we're right and you're wrong, your kid is no longer invited to be here. And so we were trying to find a way to, right now the staff needs to feel listened to because they are being faced with this every single day. And it is not one building or the other. It is not one population or another. It is every building across the board. So the other thing that I wanted to share with you, keep one second. So this is the kind of data that we get. And so this is the nineteen twenty school year. This is so far this year. This is minor behaviors. There's one thousand four hundred and sixty-one minor write-ups so far this year. We are barely at nine weeks. Majors, one thousand four hundred and thirty-four so far this school year. What this shows us right here is what the primary behavior type is. And so you can look right here. The primary is a minor for defiance and disrespect. And the next one is a major for physical aggression. We broke this down administratively. And then the next one is a major for defiance in subordination, non-compliance. So a minor might be a teacher asks a student to do something and they flat out refuse and it can remain semi-peaceful, but the student will still get written up for a minor for being defiant. We talked about it administratively, looking at building by building. To be honest, Forest Street has more of the physical aggression, but if you consider that, they don't have the words yet and so they will shove, push, whatever, when they're feeling that sense of frustration. And then the very next one is the major defiance in subordination, non-compliance. And so that is either because a student has been written up three times as a minor for defiance and then it becomes a major, or because the incident was so significant that it automatically jumps to a major. So all of this information is available to us and it is an incredible tool so that we can look quickly. Here's the other thing. You can look by month. So September, October, November. We looked at, here's the days of the week. Somebody had the smart idea that Mondays should be, we should be closed. I asked if Fridays were less because we get out an hour early on Friday. But no, because this is the time of day that the problems are happening and noon is the, one of the greatest challenges. What is also interesting to look at is when we think about this behavior, we think, boy, that darn playground or boy, those buses. The number one area, remember our primary incident was defiance and disrespect. The number one area is in the classroom. Our teachers are screaming for tools and support to be able to manage that classroom environment in a way that the instruction can take precedence instead of the negative behaviors. So wanted to share this information with you and just give you, and this is so far this year. So so far this year, eighty percent of our students have zero to one write-up and we are already at a hundred and forty-four kids that have six or more. The other conversation that I want to share with you a little bit is that it is not a special education problem. It is not a general education problem. We've gone through this with each building and at Forest Street, it's not, the top five flyers are not special education students. Partially down there, there's not as many identified because they were younger to the system. At Red Creek right now, it is a special, our top flyers are special education. At the middle school, they're not, and at the high school, they are. And so that is just the mix of who it is. So it's not a special ed versus gen ed problem. It is a defiance and disrespect problem that we are having. And so the teachers need to feel listened to. The principals need to know where that line is and what they're going to be supported in, in their actions and their consequences. And I want to be able to start talking about as a community, we believe this as opposed to feeling like we're constantly battling. And so we want to have productive conversations about behaviors and what our plans are to address it. Are there any other things that you want to look at in here? Otherwise I'll give Jill back the screen. We can continue talking. But, thank you. We are doing it by different levels and we've got some teachers that have already said, I am, I've got some ideas. I think we need to, you know, ramp up this, we need to do this. We've talked a lot about social emotional learning curriculum, that there's a lot of research-based curriculums that we don't institute at our secondary levels. That might be a good first starting point. I've asked at superintendent meetings. I mean, we are all reaching out for some solutions here. And the moral of the story is kids have been empowered for too long and we need to make that stop. So that may mean that you're going to get more involved in disciplinary conversations. And I would hope that if you have questions or concerns or feel strongly about that idea that you would either choose to attend some of those discipline meetings or if those aren't available for you, that you would have some conversation with me. Because in the end, you are the ultimate disciplinarians of the district when it comes to the decision of expulsion or not. And so as we have these conversations internally, we need to know where you lie on that very same topic because it would be disappointing to have conversations with students and staff and families and administration and then it comes to you and you have a completely different philosophy than us. And so wanted to put that out there for you. Any questions or comments about that right out of the gate?
Can you just remind us the dates of that question?
I certainly can. December third is in the high school LMC and December fifth, it is in the Red Creek LMC. And they both start at three, high school probably starts at three thirty, Red Creek might be three twenty. I'll look because they get done a little early. I'm sorry, it is three thirty? I'll probably move it to three twenty because I think they can be there sooner.
What date was Red Creek or December?
Red Creek is December fifth. I wanted to have them fairly close to each other because this is a topic that's being talked about across buildings. And so I want kind of everyone to get the same information. So our hope is that we can come up with some kind of a structure that.
Need a policy?
Our policy would not be like, where do we draw the line on when to remove a kid? It's not like that unless it's AODA or weapon-related. We certainly have very clear policy on that. It would be, in my opinion, dangerous story policy if a student refuses to do as asked, you know, that would, that would.
We kind of have like rules.
We've got a conduct, student code of conduct. Yep, we definitely do. And there is policy on the student code of conduct, but it's not as, you know, descriptive as to when this happens, this should happen. Any other questions or comments or concerns with that?
Are the meetings meant to be pertaining to the particular school at which they're taking place?
So I feel like those conversations are, there definitely is a difference between an elementary defiance and a secondary defiance. And so we decided instead of drilling to each building, we would go by levels. And so that's why we did an elementary one and a secondary one. If someone's not available for theirs, they can come to the other. The challenge is going to be to allow people the opportunity to feel listened to without sitting for an hour listening to stories of naughty kids. And so I think that we'll come up with a structure that allows for both of those things to happen. And I said in the invite that we will certainly spend some time recognizing the problem, but then want to be solution-seeking as well.
Good information.
And now I would turn it over to the buildings, which Melanie has already gone. Did you see that?
At the high school, we are getting ready for our fall, our winter sports and have our first basketball game this Thursday, the girls' basketball game, the hockey game on Friday. All sports will be in full swing next week. We also have the music department preparing for, I think it's the forty-first annual or forty-seventh annual Madrigal program that they're getting prepared for. Speaking of the music department, Sam Walker, our music teacher, left Saturday morning for Austria with two of our students and they arrived safely. And today completed their first day with the German, Italian, Hungarian and Russian and Austrian students and talking about overcoming prejudices in their different countries and working together. And they had, they prepared a huge meal tonight as part of the first day. And we'll, by the end of the week, have a presentation prepared. And then our students are going to continue on to Vienna and Budapest for.
Do you remember the names of the students that are there?
It's Carolyn Nelson and Caitlin Newman.
Great.
And you'll probably hear from the other buildings as well. We are preparing for the Project Christmas season and partnering together with Papa Murphy's this year. On December fifth, the high school and middle school staff will be there. And we're going to be the elementary this year.
Thanks, Tom. Good evening, everyone. First, before I forget, this will have happened by the time we come to December's board meeting, but on Monday, December ninth, I believe the middle school is the first school to kick off the Christmas concert season. So please come on out and enjoy the middle school Christmas concert on Monday, December ninth at seven p.m. in the London Theater.
And Dave, if I could just, that's the empty bowls event as well, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yep, just wanted to be clear. That's also the empty bowls for those that rely on that holiday shopping opportunity.
Yep, absolutely. And in addition to that, there is an art display and a technology display that Brian Stemper and Amy Olson from the middle school set out. And I believe they collaborated with the high school staff also on some of those. So it's a great big event. Lots going on in the comments. So come on out, get a chance to on Monday, December ninth. This morning, all schools in the district were privileged to host the annual Ho-Chunk flag raising in recognition of Native American awareness or Native American Heritage Month, the month of November. And we had a very nice talk from Jeriah Ray and he was there with the singers. I'm sorry, I can't remember their name.
Blue Thunder.
Blue Thunder singers who performed the drumming for the ceremony. And the flag was raised, I believe, by Jeriah Zdega, Mr. Snake. And then Jeriah went into further detail about the Ho-Chunk Nation that, you know, it's more than just what you see at that casino out there on Highway fifty-four. For example, this drum was made in nineteen seventy-five and has been passed down as have drums through generations of Ho-Chunk people. So very interesting. I never cease to be amazed at our middle school squirrels over there, you know, who can get all, always grabbing and touching each other. But when they get out there and it's time to be quiet, they are very respectful and they listen. And it's nice to have some of our Ho-Chunk students, boys and girls, get up there and join in the singing too. So Dr. Severson was there also this morning. So very nice job this morning to those students and the Ho-Chunk Nation. And I don't know if all of you, I thought Mary Jo mentioned, maybe you got an email from Brian Stemper about the technology education, but he talked about the VEX IQ robotics team. So Mr. Stemper does a lot of work with students and he puts in an incredible amount of time of his own free time. He goes on weekends to competitions with these kids. And they now have four teams, three middle school and one elementary team. All four teams competed in a thirty-three-team tournament on November twenty-second in Whitehall. Lackaber Falls was represented very well by placing fifth, thirteenth, twentieth and thirtieth. The next competition will be in Lackaber Falls where they host a fifty-team tournament in the Fieldhouse. And that is on December fourteenth, so he welcomes you or encourages you to come out and check that out when you get the chance. And then another competition again, competition again on January twenty-fourth. And Teresa Skoksted kind of stole my thunder, which is fine, but on one of the slides up there, she had a picture of a young sixth grader. There she is, Ayana Nicholas. And Ayana is in sixth grade and Mr. Fens shared that photo with me because she made the cake earth model. And I don't know who got to eat that, if it was Mr. Fens or maybe Ayana and her friends in class. But the students can use any materials they wish within reason to create a replica of the earth, complete with the, all the parts of the earth, you know, the mantle, the core and the magma and all that big stuff that they know what it is in the earth and then they share it with the class. So a nice job, Ayana. And I got to mention that too out at the district area meeting at the Ho-Chunk Nation earlier, or last week. So nice to share all the good stuff going on. Thank you.
So next month, I promise I'm going to meet with Shelley ahead of time and talk to Laura List. Don't keep taking yours. That's okay, that's okay. So just coming off our people, I just thought, there's been a lot of celebrations going on in our building and some of you heard pieces and parts of them. But I believe it was last week, we welcomed Senator Jeff Smith to Red Creek Elementary to honor our school psychologist, Andy Kastner. And he was one of five in the nation that received the Power User Award from basically the eddychlimber people. So all those graphs and things that you just saw with the behaviors and things, Andy is the one that helped create that from the ground level when eddychlimber first came to our district. And so and a couple of years ago, I attended a conference and we walked in the door and all of a sudden I was like, what is going on? I'm sorry, I'm kind of behind some wood. I'm so sorry. And all of a sudden, everybody at the sign-in table were like, that's Andy Kastner, I think he's cool. Go tell him. I mean, I was like, wow. I didn't know I was with such a celebrity. So that was really fun. And so then I thought, well, I offered him a tour of Red Creek and thinking that we'll stop by and talk about Jen Doll and her national, her ornaments for the National Christmas Tree. And we got in there and they're like, hey, Jeff, how you doing? Well, of course, they're neighbors and they're all known. He knows all about how fantastic Jen is. So Jen is my other highlight with the twenty-four ornaments. In two weeks, we'll be heading to Washington DC to see our tree. So there's the national tree and then there's fifty-six little trees all the way around. They're six-foot trees. So our twenty-four ornaments will be on its own tree. So I can't wait. They say there's signage and things, so I'll take lots of pictures and bring. So, I can't wait. They say there's signage and things, so I'll take lots of pictures and bring them back to share. But also, and her quote was, she's winning at life lately, was her acceptance of our art and design standards. That's pretty awesome. Ariel Hall, this has been probably a month ago, presented up at the National Indian Education Association Conference up in the cities. We also had Lori Spoudy and, Paul or Ela?
I think it was Paul.
Paul. So, they all represented Lackawea Falls up there at the national conference, so that was exciting. And then, last Monday, Stephanie Coles and Jody Gavron are simply priceless. And Mayor Joe attended, the Veterans Day program is just over the top. And, and it's really cool, they create a script. So, the fifth-grade kids lead the whole program and come up turn at a time. And when you get 500 kids singing some of those patriotic songs, all, it's just unbelievable. And then, we do our Hall of Heroes, so the kids line out the gym and all the way down the hall. So, they high-five and clap their veterans' hands as they leave, and then they have their punch and cookies. But Stephanie Coles and Jody Gavron do so much work for that, and it's just quite an honor.
I have to tell you, I took a little video, and there's three vets in my family, my son, my brother, and the kids said they loved it.
Very good, very good. And something that we don't, we don't go to anybody else's events, you know, we just have ours. So, you never know in comparison what other schools do. We have a new building aide this year, Tiffany Leece, and she's been in three different schools. She said, "This is by far the best Veterans Day program I've ever been to." So, that was really cool for our staff to hear too.
And those ladies are calm, the music teacher, I'd be mine.
Yeah, I always say they're like the kindergarten whispers. Jody Gavron and 130 kindergarteners, it's just unbelievable. So, thank you.
That, that it? Okay. I've gotten a lot of thank-yous about our WASB dinner, our regional meeting that we hosted, and from all of our CISA schools that attended. And so, thank you for all the work that was done for that, that really did showcase. And everyone says it will stand out as one of the most pleasurable meetings they ever had. And they, they did go away with something new, so that was good. Okay, conference workshop attendance, anyone got anything to report? Okay, future agenda, we've got a few things on already with our behavior and discussion of the land, I guess.
So, can I ask for clarification? The topic was inclusion. Are you looking for an update on the behavior conversations for next month? That that should be a separate agenda item? Are you also wanting to talk about inclusive educational practices?
I think those are two separate things.
They are, that's why. I'm asking if you want them both or not.
I would, I would think it would be good. I don't know what else is on the agenda, it's a little long time.
It's all good, I'm just asking for clarification on what you wanted.
I think it would also be nice to get some information on this new grading system that's being implemented up at the high school.
Anything else?
Are you wanting the land to be an action item?
Wow, I don't know.
Already, I don't know. I, I mean, we really need some information, and probably with that committee?
I almost feel like some community input, how they feel about that would be important.
If they have a committee, will the committee, or will they be invited, the community into that conversation?
What I heard was that Mayor Eddie has identified members of the committee, and I think those are the names that he shared here. I do, I did not hear that there is a broader community committee.
They talked about conditional use, they have a hearing for the planning commission.
But that's after the property is theirs, they would do a conditional use hearing, which would be the neighbor's opportunity to go in and voice that concern.
Do we have a board development? We don't have one scheduled at all.
But we could, that's what I, that's why I'm asking what my stuff is.
It's going to be a long conversation.
I'm sorry, I was listening to their, what, we take a board development? Okay. And we can talk about it when that gets scheduled, but do we want to invite their committee? Do we want to have a joint conversation? And perhaps you want to share with them your strong beliefs on getting community input?
I think that would be the best use of time, so we can get answers right away.
For the whole time we walk them there, I think? Or do we want to talk separately before they come in?
This is a pretty thorough document of what they are intending, so I don't, I mean, unless, because, I mean, I think there's a lot of questions if they're not going to be able to answer because they haven't got that information. That's my sense of it. From the initial site evaluation things, which is what they presented to us.
Well, perhaps we could come up with an agenda of what our concerns are for them to address ahead of time for us, or something.
And I think the other thing is that, while the schools are and should be cooperatively working with other community organizations, our, as a board, our initial responsibilities is the school district, making good decisions for the school district.
Because if we did decide to do something, you know, to allow the city to do something with that, we have to have some other plan in place for, to have property in case we need to expand in some way.
I was thinking how cool having my office at the fire station would be with that little slidey thing. Right now, Jill, I share a wall, I'm thinking like, I could be upstairs, and if I were downstairs, I could drop into her office. Sorry, that all just came to me tonight.
And Jill was concerned about a bridge liability.
Yeah, a fire pole.
Yeah, okay.
There's always a 10-year-old working inside on street.
So, do you guys think there's a need for us to meet separately before we talk to people? Or just to have people there?
What people?
The committee, the committee, yeah, it's not our job to get the neighborhood.
No.
But you're not willing to make a decision until somebody gets the neighborhood? So, let's be honest, right? I mean, I guess it's not our job, but you're not wanting to make a decision until you know.
Well, realistically, you can't imagine anybody in the neighborhood would be doing cartwheels for this.
And so, then, I'm, I'm certainly not trying to sway, I'm just simply going to say, so the neighbors is maybe 20 people in our community versus the other. And I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other, because we certainly have our own needs, but...
Didn't Brett say that after they go to their committee meeting tomorrow night, or to the council meeting tomorrow night, then, then perhaps they were going to maybe get some opinions or something after?
They've already contacted two people about selling their property there. Because when I told him that we weren't interested, he's like, "Oh, my gosh, I've already contacted two homeowners that are trying to buy their houses."
That's a little premature.
Okay, well, for sure, we need board development.
So, I will send, Mary, I will send her to do the...
I just feel like there are so many considerations we need to think about. I'm not sure how, how much conversation would really involve the city at this point. I don't, I don't know.
You're thinking just us?
How about we look for a date, and before that date, then we'll talk about where you guys are sitting and see if there's additional information you'd like to throw back, and then we can figure it out then.
That sounds like a good plan.
Once we get a chance to really do it, we might have a clearer idea.
Anything else for future discussions?
I had just two other reminders that I forgot. The one was that we did meet with a group about the High School Co-curricular and Activity Code, and we had some participation from board members as well. Some really good discussion, and Jay Reidman has done a nice job reaching out to other districts and seeing what they do. And he's come up with a, a nice chart that he's interested in. And so, what we talked about was, as soon as that is ready, that comes to the board for, to become board policy. And so, it will not happen before winter sports, but it's possible that by spring sports, we already have a different model in place. And so, I told him that whenever it was ready, you can come to the board for your approval, because that becomes part of board policy. And then, whenever that's done, we can have athletes re-sign, and it could start taking effect as opposed to waiting all the way until next year.
I apologize, I had to leave that meeting for other reasons. But one of the things I did ask, and I'd like information on, is if the criteria that we were speaking on, the grading criteria, has that made an effect in other areas? You know, is there any data to show that by lowering our required grading standards will increase participation?
I am not even sure how to find that, but I will...
I just would be curious about, I mean, because I'm, I'm not convinced that that's the only reason that...
Well, it's certainly not the only, certainly not. In fact, when we looked at it, we saw that the vast majority of kids that get 1F get 5F. Were you there during that part of the conversation? That there's a small number of kids who slip and get 1F, and those are the ones that would be directly impacted by this policy. The kids who are completely disengaged are getting 5Fs, and so, it's not going to change the world for them. So, it was that small number of kids that slip, you know, that are typically above the line. But I can, see what I can find. And then, the other thing I wanted to remind people of is, if you could please come to the expulsion hearing at least 15 minutes before to look at your packet. It is really difficult for you to listen to testimony at the same time you're trying to read. And so, if you could pretty please try to be here at least 15 minutes to go through that packet, that would be greatly appreciated.
And in my email, I said 30 minutes. I mean, that, that's kind of been our past practice, but I think we've been kind of slipping with that lately. And it is really, really important for us to be fully engaged and informed and as a respect to the whole process, to the families, as well as our attorneys coming from Madison, to be prepared for that. So, we've got some busy times here. So, that's our first one tomorrow. The next one, that you look on the email, that was changed, and I'm not going to be attending that one. I, I'm, that was the one date I couldn't, but we have to go with our attorney's schedule too. So, I've talked to Scott, he will facilitate that.
Wednesday, December 4th is when they are moved, and there are two of them.
So, we've got some busy times here, so.
Rand's assistant had thrown out the 5th, she can't even get here until 6:00 p.m. on the 5th. And with two hearings after that, that would be a very busy day.
So, there are two on Wednesday, the 4th?
And that was just sent out as an update today, so check your emails on that. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned at 8 o'clock.